Bishop Ellis Harper, Ark of Safety Church. It remains standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you coming before you today. Lord, we ask that your divine presence be in our midst today. We pray that the peace of God which supersedes all understanding will rest ruling abide in the hearts of us on today. We ask right now that the Holy Ghost manifest himself as the teacher. God, in Jesus' name, we ask God for the spirit of progress to continue to rule and rest in our heart. And Lord, we ask right now, in the name of Jesus, God, that you would continue to lead, God, this government, God, this body. God, to continue to allow the changes that need to be made, God, and give them the heart and the desire, as well as us, the mindset to understand your divine presence and your will. It is in Jesus' name that we pray and we thank you. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public for which it stands, where nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just before we would sit down, I'd ask that we would observe a moment of silence in honor of Lumix Aubrey Nicholas, who passed away on last week. We are all proud members of Aubrey's Army. And our most sincere and deepest thoughts and condolences and our heartiest prayers are with her, her family, including her mother Brooke, her father Jay, who's a captain with the Mobile Fire Rescue Department, her younger brother, and her many, many, many friends and all of the thousands who've been inspired by that young lady's courage, tenacity, and dedication. Aubrey in person may not live, but her spirit and her army will move forward. I ask that we would observe a moment of silence in honor of Aubrey Nicholas.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richardson.
I can also add that I have been informed that A.J. McCarron, that A.J. McCarron, a professional basketball player, was hurt. He may not be able to play this season. His dad, Tony McCarron, works for the fire department. And that's cute.
Football.
Football, I'm sorry. Football player. And he was hurt in the first game. And his injuries may not allow him to play this season, anymore this season. And let's pray for A.J. and his family.
Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's good to see each and every one of you. The rules of the council in this particular meeting are quite simple. We ask first that you either silence or turn off all the electronic devices. If you're desiring to address the council, you must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or a public hearing or gen item that you would like to speak on before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, we ask that you clearly state both your name and your address. Anyone who'd like to speak on a non-gen item must contact the city clerk's office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to the council meeting you'd like to speak. Your subject must be pertinent to City of Mobile business. If you don't give the proper notice, you won't be allowed to speak. Each speaker is granted five minutes. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. That's your sign to begin wrapping up. At the second bell, we ask, that would indicate your time is over, and we ask that you conclude your remarks. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements ought to be made to myself or services chair, and then I will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain the quorum, there is to be no undue applause and or public outcry during the course of this meeting. Those are the rules, and thank you for your interest in municipal government. Ma'am City Clerk?
Mr. Chair, before we get going.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to let you know that I have an appointment coming up this afternoon, and I will probably have to leave before the meeting is over if it starts running long. So just wanted to alert you to that and make sure that I will be excused.
I appreciate that, Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Mayor?
I said I also will have to be leaving early.
Well, both of you have hall passes.
I'd much rather be going where I'm going than where she's going.
Yeah, but he's not going with me. I don't think he wants to go to the same place I'm going.
Well, thank you. Thank you all both for letting everyone know. Ma'am City Clerk?
Approval of minutes of August 14th.
Sumo.
Second.
Improperly moved and second in the discussion. Am not all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Minutes approve.
Communications for the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see everybody here this morning. A few remarks under the area of quality of life and mobility. If you've ridden around the University of South Alabama campus, or if you've ridden around downtown and you haven't seen a green bike, then I suggest you get your glasses changed. There's 500 of them on the street, and it appears that we already have students and adults riding them, which is great to see. The cost is a dollar per hour, a dollar per half hour for adults, 50 cents if you're a student. And they're discount memberships for low-income individuals. I think I've said this before, but to deter theft, each bike is enabled with an active GPS, self-activating lock, and very unique parts for these bicycles only. In the area of public safety and awareness, please, all people driving vehicles, remember there is a three, they call it the three-feet law. You are to allow at least three feet every time you pass somebody, a cyclist that's on the road. Also, we ask those that use the bicycles, please don't leave them in the middle of a sidewalk or somewhere where they can be tripped over. It's very interesting to see the strong demand that continues for more transportation options in the city. Under the area of public safety, last week, we had the ribbon-cutting for the Gulf Coast Technology Center. You've heard me say that it's a collaborative effort between the Mobile Police Department, the Mobile County Public Sheriff's, excuse me, the Mobile County Sheriff's Office and Baldwin County Sheriff's Office, working with several, working with several federal agencies, the Secret Service, the FBI, the US Postal Service. And it's where all of the technology, the latest state-of-the-art equipment, is all in one location, manned with individuals from all of those units, the best brain power we have on solving crimes. It's very exciting to see. As I've said in the past, the Secret Service says they know of nowhere else this is going on in the United States, to have this many agencies collaborating to try to make a community a safer place to live. Also, I'd add that last week, we had an opportunity to start a process of collaboration with the Mobile County Public School System, to incorporate some ideas that should make our, will make our schools a safer place for all of our young people. In the area of jobs, Walmart is officially open. They're 575 people at this time. As it grows and into the future, there'll be 750 once it's fully operational. One of the fun facts, if you haven't been out there, it's hard to imagine this, but it's the same size or equivalent to 30 USS Alabamas could be fit in that building. It's a monster of a building. And we're mighty, mighty grateful for what Walmart has done to invest in the community. So again, thank everybody for being here.
I'm sorry, John Peevy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is always a pleasure to come before you, ladies and gentlemen, to present some of your employees who are the absolute finest. We have a lot of people in public works that provide services that you can't believe of, but this is the Urban Forestry Department. And I'm gonna let Peter introduce these guys. I've been out with them on several calls, watching mostly, but I can tell you, they are the ones who are generally called out first on any event. A slight breeze in this town will knock them down, and it's never between the working hours. It's always at night and late at hours, and these guys are Johnny on the spot and incredibly professional. You won't find a better department within this city than this Urban Forestry Department. And it's my pleasure to introduce their leader, Mr. Peter Toler.
City Council.
Good morning, Mayor. Good to be here. My name is Peter Toler. I'm the Municipal Arbors for the City of Mobile. But this today is not about me. I want to recognize these guys behind me. Whenever a tree hits the city streets, blocking any access in any way, shape, or form, these are the men behind me that respond, clear those disasters, and even on your normal business day, our lovely live oaks and on city property, city right of way, these are the men here that take care of all the trees in the City of Mobile. Mobile is a city under the trees, and I just felt it was very vital to introduce to everybody the boots on the ground, the people that get the job done. This is John Arnold, Kelvin Daniels, Eric Bell Jr., Paul Pruitt, James Wright, and Wenda Alexander. I just want to bring them down there, tell them a great job in front of the entire city. Mayor, the staff, thank you everybody for coming. Just want to recognize them. I can't say enough about them. Without them, I'm nothing. I can only do my part, and they go over and above and beyond doing their part.
And when you all, when you all finish, we'd like for you to come up here. When you all finish, we'd like for you to come up here. We want to get a picture as well.
Let's just go around.
Right. That's right.
Now, why a shoulder?
There we go. Come on up.
Uh-oh, watch out.
Appreciate you. Appreciate you. Appreciate you. Appreciate you. Appreciate you. Get all the tall people in the front now. Appreciate you.
Push that down.
Push it down. It's hard, you. That's wrong.
Yes.
There we go.
Thank you.
Let's give them another big round of applause. I just think it is so neat and needed that we take time to recognize our hard-working employees. They really do keep this city running, and I hope that more directors will bring their hard-working staff so that we can continue to spotlight them and let them know that they are indeed appreciated.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
For the record, I would like to cite that there are four core services for the city: police, fire, trash, and garbage. Those are the four core services, and we guess so one of them come here.
Ma'am City Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda.
Sumo. Second. Improper motion and second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for wave of the noise, ordinance on September 22nd, October 13th, and October 13th on Virginia Street, August 28th, 29th, September 4th, 5th, 11th, 12th, 18th, 19th, 25th, and 26th, November 6th, 7th, 13th, 14th, 20th, and 21st on Dolphin Street.
Sumo.
Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion?
No.
No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings today is a public hearing to determine if structures at 400 St. Charles Avenue, 476 Rich Road, 558 Reynolds Street, 1567 Plover Street, 1712 Union Street, 2855 Pages Lane are public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Is there anyone here that would like to have offer any commentary on these particular properties?
This is your public hearing, this is your time. If not, our hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Cedric Miles.
Good morning.
Cedric Miles, 1312 Forest Cove Drive, Mobile, Alabama, 36618. I'm here this morning because I just hope the council does the right thing concerning the funding of the stadium for South Alabama. And also, I hope they do the right things with last stadium. I know many people think that these are two different issues. No, these issues are entwined. And the reason I say that they're entwined is because whatever happens today is gonna affect both places. So I think these are not two different issues. They're two issues that are going hand in hand. And I do believe that South Alabama needs a stadium. I think, I definitely think any college of that size and of that stature needs a football stadium. However, I don't know if it's the right thing for the city to fund the stadium, 'cause Mobile has many other needs. I work downtown, going down Government Street when it's raining, going down Dolphin Street, Virginia Street, Houston Street. You almost need a boat sometimes.
Get out of District 2, bro.
Pardon?
I said, spread it around. You hitting District too hard. You hitting District too hard.
No, it's not too hard sometimes.
I understand.
I'm just saying what I think needs to be said.
Yes, sir.
And we have a lot of other issues here in Mobile.
That's right.
And South, like I say, I want South to have the stadium. I graduated from South. I graduated from South when that was nothing but a basketball team. But I will say, we did have a hell of a basketball team back then. And so, so I just hope the city does the right thing, the council does the right thing today, because there are many other needs that are needed in this, there are many other needs in this city. South deserves the stadium, but if we're gonna move the stadium out, if we're gonna move those games out there, the Senior Bowl, the Gulf Coast Challenge, and also the Dollar General Bowl, with the airport being, you're moving the airport to Brooklyn, we don't need the people to have to have a boat to get to the game. Thank you.
Timothy Harris.
Timothy Harris, 1924 Seal Street, 36617, District 1. Good morning, council.
Good morning.
Good morning, administration. Today, I am to talk about 2626 Carter Avenue. Most, you know, I ran for council last year, but I lost to the incumbent. And though I lost to him, it's still people in the district who think I represent them. So I'm here to speak on behalf of a district resident that I dearly know that has great dealings with my family as well. It's about the ditch issues. And she states that the ditch was not in front of her house before the repairs took place. And now she has a drainage ditch. The lady's name is Ms. Joanne Murphy. She has a drainage ditch in front of her yard, where she once had just a front yard, but now her front yard is a drainage ditch. She has great nieces, great nephews, nieces and nephews, and a plethora of family members that come there, and it's been a generation family home. And now, all of a sudden, out of the blue, their property is no longer what they used to know. I have a letter here that reads, Honorable William S. Stimson, Mayor, City of Mobile. Dear Mayor Stimson, my office was contacted on several occasions regarding what Ms. Joanne Murphy sees as a major issue. Her street, Carter Avenue, recently had its ditches closed. According to Ms. Murphy, who resides at 2626 Carter Avenue, a drainage outlet was installed near her front door, not in the area where the ditch was located. She is requesting that the drainage outlet be relocated from the front of her house and off her property. She can be reached at 251-421-2766. I'm forwarding her complaint to your office for lack of authority to interfere in administrative matters. My request is that Ms. Murphy be provided a response to the grave issue she raised, and if it is at all possible, provide her relief. Sincerely, Frederick D. Richardson Jr., Council Member, District 1. Going to the end of that, Ms. Murphy should receive some relief in this matter. I came down to council one time before, when we were talking about the bus issues, and Councilman Richardson stated that if we made a problem today, we can amend it tomorrow. What I see today is a problem. What I see that needs to go forward is an amending. Ms. Murphy wants that ditch removed in front of her property. All property taxpayers deserve a right to what they are entitled to, especially when the ditch is coming past her threshold onto her property, not just the city's property. It's leaving off the city and coming onto her property. I took a view at it myself. It's even updated on Google Maps by now. You can even see it there. I was told that the administration came out, and they were told that there's nothing that can be done. I don't believe that. So I'm urging that something could happen to Ms. Murphy, and I will be keeping a close eye. And as you all know, I won't sleep until something happens. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richardson.
Yes, sir. Tim, I think you adequately discussed, what you stated is the problem, it's not what's stated in the letter.
Okay.
If you look at the letter, the letter has to do with a drainage inlet.
Right.
What you have told us and the people out here, that the trouble is a drainage ditch.
Hold on one second. Is that four minutes or five minutes? Okay, so before my five minutes is up, I also like, before my five minutes is up, I also like to entitle that she has great concerns for the future, whereas we don't see a problem today, we see a problem tomorrow. She has fear because the city has tendencies to let things build up, like ditches, overgrown grass, places of that nature. She has a problem with that because she sees in the future that that will be a buildup, and one day she'll come home to water moccasins and all kind of river wood rats right at her front door, when she never had that problem before. Now, regardless of whatever, you have to say back towards what I'm saying, this is what a property owner in the City of Mobile desires, so that's what the city needs to work on, pleasing their citizens. Like Mr. Miles just said, we have many issues that we need to tend to already. That's all I have to say about it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, let me finish. If you Google Carter Avenue, you will see deep ditches on both sides of that street running parallel to the street. It's an old, it's an old picture. We have spent about a half million dollars on Carter Avenue. There is not a ditch on Carter Avenue anywhere. Not one ditch. If you go down Carter Avenue, it would look like you're going down any other main street in the City of Mobile. What happened is that once the city closed the ditches, they had to do something about the water. So what they did, they put big pipes running parallel with the street. They put big pipes down there to carry that water to the main inlet. And then they put inlets, so the street would run over to these drainage inlets and get it to the pipe and go. They put the inlet in front of her house. It's inlet in front of my house, 'cause it doesn't matter with me, but it mattered with her. It did matter with her. She does not want that drainage inlet in front of her house. It's on city property, it's not on her property. It's red, it's in the center where the ditch used to be. I don't disagree with her. And I talked yesterday to Mr. Amberger, and he says, when we, when we let the contractor to start closing the other ditches, he's gonna have the contractor to go over there and move that inlet. So this is 2019, we got our budget yesterday, October 1, 2018, the contractors will have the money to go and do what they need to do. So in the very near future, I expect the contractor to go out there, move that inlet, close it up, move it down the street, and let's go. But I want you to know, it has absolutely nothing to do with a ditch. I have a picture here that I told, I gave it to Deter too late. What I intended to do is show you Carter Avenue. Carter Avenue is a beautiful street, not one, I have closed every ditch, the whole Carter Avenue has been closed, there are no ditches. But if you look at a Google, Google map, Google Earth, if you Google that street, you will see ditches. The picture they're using is old. It's a, we recently closed all of the ditches on both sides of Carter Avenue, and we will get that inlet. And Dee, remind me to contact Ms. Murphy, give her the solution. The solution is, we're gonna move that inlet, according to the administration, we will move that inlet from in front of her house, and I think she'll be just fine.
Ma'am City Clerk?
Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Mayor.
I don't get to see every drainage problem we have in the city, or every 3-1-1 call, but the administration just didn't go out there. I've been there twice to look at it. What Mr. Richardson is saying is exactly right. The ditch is on city property, the manhole needs to be moved. When Mr. Amberger explained what could be done, and how we could move it, and how we could pay for it, I was decided to move it, and that will happen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
I want to make another point. I would like for us, at some point, to have a screen back here, so we can show the citizens what we are talking about. We have one.
We have a screen.
They show us how to operate it.
Projector.
I have a picture of the ditch. Can I get it on screen? I can't get it on screen. I want, I want the ability to put on the screen what I'm talking about. Having a screen, that's not good enough. I want the ability to use the screen. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Ma'am City Clerk?
Geraldine London.
I am Geraldine Rushing London, and I live at 1169 Heron Lake Circle, Mobile, 36693. I applaud the council for not rushing into a decision that will affect the citizens of Mobile for 20 years. First, a decision of this magnitude requires deliberate negotiations. All pertinent information should be shared with the council, preferably- All pertinent information should be shared with the council preferably four to six months in advance. To my knowledge, neither the stadium board, council, nor the constituents have been provided the report on the needed repairs of Lad Stadium. We need to know how $33 million was determined to be the cost of the repairs. I could say it costs $2,000. My estimate would be as good as the previously stated estimate without supporting documents. It is my understanding the engineer's report did not include costs. This omission of cost from the report makes me wonder, was the omission intentional? Would the cost not substantiate the proposed repurposing slash demolishing of Lad Stadium? Without documentation, these questions along with others will always be present. We need full disclosure to allow the council to make an informed decision. Additionally, has USA provided documentation of the cost for building the stadium? Are the citizens of Mobile supplementing operational costs? Is there any documentation to support that estimate, or was the cost pulled out of the air? Secondly, I am concerned that many advocates of the city providing $10 million over a 20-year period may not be stakeholders in Mobile. I wonder how many people present today and previous meetings actually live in the City of Mobile? How many people go home to Simms, Saraland, and other municipalities in Mobile County? How many people live in unincorporated areas of Mobile County? How many people reside in Bowlin County, across the state lines to Mississippi, or even possibly Florida? We have to consider many people that are advocating the City of Mobile provide funding do not have a vested interest and will not be affected because they don't live in Mobile. How many people on the mayor's executive staff live outside of City of Mobile? The residents of affected areas are rooted in Mobile. We are lifelong residents. Many students, faculty, and staff will relocate in a few years, seeking career advancement in other areas. The residents of Mobile will be affected while USA staff and students are more likely to relocate to other areas. The lifelong residents pay property taxes. We're buying our gas, our food, clothing, et cetera, in Mobile. I certainly hope that we have learned something from this flawed process. This process has been an exercise in exclusion. Our community would benefit from input from a diverse population representative of Mobile. The days of making decisions for the mass is outdated. The role to, to the proposal of funding for USA Stadium has been bumpy from the start through the perceived intentional absence of necessary information and input from our council. I am in disbelief that the administration thought that they could bring such an important issue before the council and expect the proposal would pass in a month's time. The council is elected to represent their constituents. The government is of the people, for the people, and by the people. This process has not reflected the 1384 quote. The City of Mobile will lose their representation if funds are given to USA. Voicedless is not a preferred position for anyone. Again, I thank you for being the stewards of our financial resources.
Gregory Dennis.
Good morning. My name is Gregory Dennis. Address is 5919 Waringwood Drive. I've been here to speak on, to the city council several times over the past three months about Hillsdale Heights subdivision issues. In addition to that, today I want to give you my assessment on the mayor's plan for the Lad and USA Stadium. First, it was insinuated that the plan was a win for the surrounding neighborhood. However, the neighborhood disagrees with this assessment. Secondly, it was insinuated that the plan was a win for current users. However, the current users disagree with this assessment. Third, it was insinuated that the plan was a win for USA. USA agrees with this assessment. Fourth, it was insinuated that the plan was a win for the city. As a citizen, I disagree with this assessment. Taking a depressed neighborhood and downsizing or demolishing a community's biggest asset in addition to it being the only vineyard of its kind in the city is not a win for the city, in my opinion. This is not good for the neighbors either, based on the mayor's own statement. Quote, "We'll spend the savings on improving our other parks and recreation centers." This is just a replay of what the city did to Hillsdale Heights subdivision. First, it was suggested that the downsizing neighborhood would be a win for the residents. The facts are, the resident's property value is declining about $5,000 a year. Second, it was suggested that it was going to be a win for current residents. The facts are, they forced some of the residents out of the neighborhood because of the city's failure to maintain the infrastructure and USA failure to properly maintain USA-owned property. Third, it was suggested it was going to be a win for University of South Alabama. That's true. USA have saved the money on maintaining USA-owned property in the neighborhood, reducing the value of other property owners' property. Fourth, it was suggested it was going to be a win for the city. The facts are, the savings on maintaining the infrastructure in Hillsdale was spending in other neighborhoods in the city. This is the same plan the mayor has for the money saved by destroying Lad, which is the savings to be spent on improving other parks and recreation centers. These undisputed facts confirm, the mayor's plan for Lad and USA Stadium is not a win for the surrounding neighborhood. It's not a win for the current users. It's a win for USA. And quoting the mayor, "It rees the city of the responsibility associated with owning and maintaining Lad, so the savings can be spent on improving our other parks and recreation centers." It's been over 90 days since I informed the city officials about a safety hazard on Cody Road, and so forth. It has, new action has been taken on removing this safety hazard. In addition to these failures, the city hasn't even taken any action on repairing Hillsdale Heights infrastructure. The responses I've heard over the past three months from the city council members in reference to the issues brought to their attention from the citizens of Mobile is very concerning. I know it's hard to come up with solutions to the city problems, but solutions such as destroying and demolishing don't require any thinking. Ideas are plain. Plans, destroying a neighborhood for the purpose of improving other parks and recreation centers in other neighborhoods is discrimination. Please be advised, the citizens of Mobile expect and deserve viable and productive ideas, plans, to move the city forward, not back, 70 years. And I personally can't wait to see how the city council votes on this issue. Thank you.
Yvette Young.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To the council chair, council members, Mayor Stimson, city employees, and residents of Mobile, my name is Yvette Young. I currently reside at 5448 Villa Trace, Hoover, Alabama, by way of 1326 Doyle Avenue, Mobile, Alabama. I'm here today to represent first and foremost my elderly parents, and as a representative of hashtag Revitalize DIP. Although I live in Hoover, my home is and always has been Mobile, Alabama. Hashtag Revitalize DIP is a grassroots initiative formed on May 31st, 2018, as a result of a shooting that occurred in the 1300 block of North Drive, resulting in the death of 19-year-old Kevin Benjamin. I formed the group simply because I'd seen and heard enough about the state of DIP. When your 83-year-old mother called you at 10 o'clock at night advising she heard gunfire from an automatic weapon, you do something. So I began with texts, then email, and now Facebook. And less than one month, we grew to over 1,000 members. The need, the desire, the passion to want a better community was evident. I reached out via email to the district representative in regards to the shooting on May 2nd, 2018. He responded on 5/8 with a copy to Mayor Stimson, Safety Director James Barber, and Chief of Police Batiste. Additionally, he called me, and we had a long, extensive conversation. I responded May 8th with a copy to the mayor, safety director, Chief Batiste, and Karen Williamson. Ms. Williamson responded, "I will be receiving a response from the mayor," which I never did, nor did I receive a response from safety director. Chief Batiste responded to me, and since that time, we've also had an extensive conversation. May 12th, upon hearing gunfire firsthand from the same location, I dialed 911. I wrote Mayor Stimson and the safety director again. I received no response. May 15th, I wrote an additional email advising I will be forming a group to address the issues on DIP. I received no response. Upon receiving no response from the mayor, the group was formed and identified multiple issues affecting DIP: crime, litter, insufficient mowings, commerce, development, restaurants, and riddled with blight. July 16th, I requested the group forward emails to the district rep and the mayor identifying five of multiple blighted properties on South DIP. I received a response from Karen Williamson advising my email had been received. July 23rd, I requested the group to forward the 716 email again, requesting a status of the five blighted properties. On July 26th, I received a response from Deputy Director Deffinbaugh, providing a detailed status of the five properties and the progress that was being made, advising future updates will be forthcoming. By district newsletter dated 6/29 and July 27th, the District 3 meeting was announced. Advising topics for discussion must be received by August 10th. Beginning August 3rd, I requested the group send an email to the mayor and the district representative regarding topics to be discussed at the meeting. Additionally, I advised the group, all emails had to be received by close of business August 10th. One week ago today, the mayor announced at the council meeting he would be unable to attend. It's my understanding, the August 20th date was coordinated with the mayor's office, and it was a date of his choosing. Yet by Tuesday, August 14th, after the August 10th deadline to receive meeting topics, he stated he would be unable to attend. Perhaps it's a coincidence and not the result of the method utilized to contact the mayor with multiple emails. I don't know, because the mayor never responded to me, however, Ms. Williamson did. As a retired supervisory special agent of the FBI, I understand what public service is, and oftentimes, we have to endure uncomfortable situations, go places we don't want to go, talk to people we don't want to talk to, make decisions we'd rather not make. But as a public servant, that's exactly what we do, paid to do, whether the people are good, bad, indifferent, and all demographics. More importantly, you have to listen to the people. I realize DIP doesn't have the same tax base or demographics as some of the other zip codes in the area, but does that mean we should be treated less than? Does that mean we should not be heard? Does that mean we should not endure a lack of commerce, safety, and parks? DIP was one of, has one of the most beautiful landscapes in the city, yet none of them are being utilized for capital improvements. I'm open to a conversation, a working group, or initiative to figure out the best way forward. When you can't reach someone, receive a response, or attend a meeting to be able to introduce yourself, shake their hand, and ask a question, you use the tool made available, which is email. We ask one thing. In the late, in the words of the late, great Aretha Franklin, "We want respect." Just a little bit, the same respect you will want for yourselves, for your family, and for your community. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Vice President Manzi. I'd like to thank Ms. Young for coming down. I'd like to thank her initiative also with the, I'm good, I'm good, with the Revitalize DIP effort and her, her committee and everything. Uh, yes, Mayor Stimson had did announce that he wasn't able, but he did send representation on last evening. Ms. Anitra Bell Henderson, and she did a standing job on last evening. Uh, she did, went down the capital improvement projects on Dolphin Out of Park Way on yesterday evening, uh, last evening, and named several things, including, you know, Albert Club Beach. So bad things not happen overnight. It gonna take steps to get to the next level, and it gonna take time to go to the next level. But I do appreciate Ms. Young and her group, you know, starting their group effort to work with the administration, and would like for them to continue to work with the administration to improving the quality of life, you know, in the South DIP area. And as Ms. Young, and, you know, it's not just only South DIP. You heard citizens from District 2, also from District 7 came down complaining about the same thing. So it's not that you all left out. You all not the only one. You heard from District 2 residents, you also heard from District 7 residents also. And again, you know, as far as my office, I'm not just for South DIP, North DIP, Mayville, Downey Bay, Oakdale, Navacarole, Pleasant Baller Road, for all of District 3. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Small.
Casey. Casey Ginn.
Thank you.
Reverend Bobby Brown, and this is regarding Lad Stadium. I'm sorry, USA Stadium.
This is the real Bobby Brown. That's right. Coming to speak, 'cause it's his priority.
Rick Aron.
Good morning.
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 I am Reverend Robert, the real Bobby Brown. I reside at 3651 Winlock Court in Mobile. Councilman Williams is my councilperson. I stand here this morning with mixed feelings. I grew up in Mayville, Alabama. When I first got married, I resided in Hillsdale. Things have occurred over 50-some years. Played on the first football team that brought a state championship to Mobile. Played at Lad Stadium, and I played at Harwood Field. What happened to Harwood Field is what I think may happen to Lad Stadium. My children and my grandchildren won't see Lad Stadium the way Harwood Field when I pray. I pray for the city, and I pray for the council. I pray for the mayor, and I pray for the citizens of Mobile. Why, Bobby, are you praying? Because now, instead of having a one Mobile, I see separate Mobile. I see a West Mobile, and a South Mobile, and a North Mobile, but I don't see a one This thing that we call Mobile has, at times, I thought was a family. Families have disagreements that they don't fight. Families sit down, and they talk out their disagreements. They work together to make a dream come true. I share with my, all my children. Some have more needs than others, and I realize their needs, but I don't overlook, they are still my children. Why am I saying this? You all are acting as the parents, and you all have children scattered all over. And you should share equally because you know their needs. Some have needs greater than others. Some have jobs that are paying high wages, and others are still seeking employment. But still, they're your children. And we are still family. People are looking at us, and they are looking to see how we treat our family members. So I ask this morning, remember that you're dealing with a family. And some family members are hurting this morning. And I ask you that whatever you have already made your mind up to do, let it be the same thing that God gave us a desire to do. It said, "Love your neighbors as yourself." That's the last and great commandment. So I ask, whatever you have decided to do this morning. So I ask, whatever you have decided to do this morning, let it be that you're loving your family as yourself. Thank you.
Brian Pugh.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the council and citizens. I'm here today on behalf of my company, Threaded Fasteners Incorporated. I'm a resident of the city of Mobile, I live in Councilman...
What is your name and address, sir?
Name of the company is Threaded Fasteners Incorporated, 3200 Crichton Street, Mobile, Alabama 36607. We're in Councilman Richardson's district. My home is in Councilman Williams' district.
Well, we need your name and your address.
Okay. Brian Pugh.
Yes, sir.
3912 Woodmont Drive, Mobile 36693.
Thank you.
Okay. But again, I have no objection personally to the stormwater fee. This is about the stormwater tax. $10 per resident, I think is reasonable, and as a resident of the city of Mobile, I'm willing to spend $10 a year to help improve the stormwater issues. As a company, though, representing our company, the commercial fees are much, much higher. So a little bit about the history of our company. Our company, Threaded Fasteners, was founded here in Mobile in 1979. We were originally located on Slava Street, which is where the cruise ship terminal is located today. Some of you may have seen our buildings on St. Louis Street. Between 2014 and 2017, we sold those buildings and relocated our employees here in the city of Mobile to a four-and-a-half acre parcel with an 81,000 square foot building located at 3200 Crichton Street. If anyone is not familiar with Crichton Street, that property is in Councilman Richardson's district. It's located off of Western Drive behind Riley Stewart Supply and the Merchants Transfer Warehouse. We now have approximately 50 employees at the Crichton Street location. We have a manufacturing facility in Western Mobile County outside the city limits and locations in other states. Based on my research, there are approximately 40, there are exactly 43,560 square feet in an acre. Accordingly, a four-and-a-half acre parcel contains approximately 196,000 square feet. Multiplied that by the rate of half a cent per square foot for commercial property in this proposed ordinance, and we calculated their annual cost increase for this tax would be approximately $980 per year. At Threaded Fasteners, we believe in being good corporate citizen and paying our fair share. We believe that governments owe a duty to their citizens to provide good services at a fair cost. Furthermore, any new tax or tax increase should be well-planned and justified to the citizens prior to its implementation. Stormwater infrastructure and planning are major issues in the city of Mobile due to its geographic location and annual rainfall. As we've all seen this morning, stormwater and drainage issues have already come up before this council today. We understand the mayor's position that stormwater planning and infrastructure were not adequate over the past 70 years as the city of Mobile grew. However, with a 10% sales tax, Mobile, on items bought in the city of Mobile, Mobile has one of the highest tax rates in the country on sales tax. I understand that not that entire 10% goes to the city, about 5% goes to the city. But it is the position of our company that the sales tax funds and new construction permit fees should be addressed to, should be used to address current and future stormwater management costs in a conservative and responsible way. Thank you for your time.
Ordinance is held over. 01024, ordinance to levy a stormwater fee.
So moved.
Second.
Prop of motion and second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Williams?
I'm going to have to apologize to the administration and to my friends on the council. I was not here last week. I took my son to Virginia to start his first year in college, and I didn't get back until much later than that meeting ended. But having said that, there was a short discussion this morning concerning this stormwater My question and the folks that I trust with certain policies like this, for their advice, we've come up with the fact that this ordinance leaves too much room for future councils and future mayors to simply decide that whatever is generated by this fee is what will be spent, and anything else is fair game to the budget process. It is that the result of the meeting this morning and the comments, that I believe that the council does not share this opinion with me, and I respect that. But I wanted everyone to understand that as I see it written, that we could end up with a net loss in what is spent on this very important issue, and that is stormwater management. We learned our lessons in the past, I hope. And if this was going to guarantee a double in the amount of money spent in this effort, I would be wholeheartedly for it. But in this case, it does not. It is simply another tax that we can't control, other than what it generates by this ordinance. And I respectfully will have to be in opposition to this vote. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you. I was able to attend the committee as a committee member as well, and listen to the information that was presented about this particular fee that will be attached to your property tax through our county revenue department. This is actually a creature of the State House, and it will bring in 1.5 million. The amount is too small to take any sales tax off of our books, but it is definitely an earmarked tax. It cannot be spent for anything but stormwater management-related issues. We pay for technicians that work for our city, consultants. We have suffered fines through ADEEM and groups that have come down and complained about our lack of attention to stormwater management just a few years ago, and we are untangling that, I believe, even still today. Back in 1989, the city put on an extra penny, and it was specifically for stormwater management. At least, it was sold for that. But when you read that legislation, it has a clause in it that says, "And any other needs that the city may have." It was kind of added, I imagine. I was not on council, I've been here a while, but I've also worked closely with citizens who would like to see our sales tax decreased and go for a fee for service. But this one doesn't quite add up enough to do that, but it does get us into a position to understand if we earmark, and the legislation is clear, then it would do exactly what it's proposing to do. We have to go to the State House to get permission, and that's a whole nother argument. And I too understand Councilman Williams' hesitation and inability to give this an approval from his office. I respect that highly. And I am hoping that this administration, in next year's budget, will be able to show this council and the community exactly where this money was spent, and that we didn't reduce spending on stormwater. In other words, we didn't subtract the million five and put it elsewhere, because we have a lot to do when it comes to stormwater management and stormwater controls. So, again, I know the $10, I haven't heard from anybody as far as our residential affixing the $10 doesn't seem to upset too many people. They're willing to see that happen. And I understand the commercial owners are going to be looking at more. So, but I understood that they met with the mayor, and this committee got the impression that they were okay, and they accepted it. And obviously, not everyone was at the table or in agreement, and that's certainly America. So, thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you. I'll try to make this short. Ms. Rich really made the point that the last ordinance stated very clearly could be used for other purposes. This one does not say that it can't be, and it leaves it up for interpretation of future councils. It's not the distrust of this council or this administration. We have to look, we have to look further out than that, and know that what Ms. Rich is talking about is 20 years old almost, and this one will be one day, and somebody's going to interpret and say, as we talked about in our pre-council meeting, that you could use these as ditches. If it carries stormwater, if it touches stormwater, if it has to do anything with stormwater, it could be okay. And boy, that really, in City of Mobile, when it storms and nothing is not touched, that just leaves too much interpretation. And if, again, if it was, if it was a little more specific, and it said that we would, we would make this amount of money plus a million and a half available for foreseeable future, I could see it differently. Thank you. Sorry.
I'll just say, I'm going to be in support of this item. We have a number, a number, we're one of the rainiest cities in this country, and we have to address the various issues that we have related to stormwater management. My concern from the beginning with this initiative is that I would ask for a balance. We need to work and strike a balance between the deployment and the purchase of these litter traps, and then spending some of these resources in our neighborhoods where we have damaged stormwater infrastructure. And if you go throughout my district, District 1, District 2, District 3, District 4, District 5, all of them, all of them, seven. And I love the litter traps, and I love the fact that we have made progress with eight of them, and we're getting in good stead with them. Though the litter traps are needed, but if we didn't litter, if you didn't put the litter on the ground in the first place, there'd be nothing to trap. There's garbage cans galore across this city. Put it in a bag and wait till you get home, and then we wouldn't have to buy a litter trap, and we could spend this money in neighborhoods, which is where it ought to be spent. And so I hope we strike a balance, Mr. Mayor, as we implement this between the litter traps, which are great, but would not be needed if we didn't litter, and fixing infrastructure in the neighborhoods, because there are rainy days, and it's not just these spontaneous delusional waters that happen sometimes. There are rainy days where citizens in my district pull out their canoes and their kayaks, and they just have a fun day with it. And it should not be that way. I know the infrastructure's old in my section of the city, I understand that, but I'm hopeful as we assess this fee, that there's a balance in how we utilize the resources.
That concludes my comments.
Vice President.
Mr. Small?
I'd like to say that I will be supporting this ordinance on this morning, and the reason why I would be supporting it, because when we last extended the penny, I asked the administration to work on ways that we can reduce the penny sales tax before it sunsets the next time. Like Councilwoman Rich stated, I mean, this is just a small fraction, but every little bit counts, and I really believe that this is a start to reducing the sales tax in the near future, where we are adding a penny to everything, you know, every time you make a sale in the city of Mobile, you're adding an extra penny to the sales tax versus just paying $10 a year on property tax. To me, it's cheaper to pay $10 at one time, you know, once a year, than versus then paying an extra penny every time you go into the store. So I will entrust, I am entrusting into the administration that they would do the right thing with the storm management water, and continue to find ways to reduce our sales tax in the near future to at least come from 10 cents to 9 cents. Thank you, Vice President Manzi.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rich?
We are under mandate by EPA and ADEEM to control our stormwater runoff. And ADEEM will find us if they find out we're not doing that. A lot of cities didn't have enough money to take the precautions to do what they have to do, what they had to do. So the state passed this, passed an ordinance where cities can charge $10 per household for cities to raise revenue to make sure that we do what is required for us to do in accordance to both ADEEM and EPA. And I feel like Councilman Manzi, that once we satisfy ADEEM and EPA, we need to start looking at these neighborhoods that would systemic problems in regards to stormwater. And I think that's what we'll be looking at in the future.
Any further discussion? If not, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or the item passes 6 to 1.
CIP resolutions held over. 21588, authorized contract with Dix Height Partners for Mobile Greenway Initiative.
So moved.
Second.
Prop of motion and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, item passes.
Resolutions held over. 01444, authorized letter of intent with University of South Alabama to facilitate the construction of the USA Stadium project.
So moved.
Second.
Prop of motion and prop of assessment. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you very much. I didn't particularly want to go first, but I'm okay with it. Been there, done that. I've been struggling with this particular issue of the letter of intent, because I certainly appreciate South Alabama, what it means to this community, its fabric is woven well within our citizenship, and everything that we do daily, from healthcare to education to engineering. I could go on and on. I wrote in my newsletter this last Friday, I send out a newsletter to residents in the district, and I explained the struggle that I have had with this. And that is, initially, I too thought this was a win-win-win as it was proposed, but in over time, and in working with the community and listening, I have decided that the stadium that the university is building is very much a stadium for the campus, which I respect, and it's a good thing, it's a positive thing. But it's not a community stadium in the sense of the word that this community requires for the size that we are. In working with the LAD board and the management, who really got taken through this message because LAD was tied to this, I learned so much about that facility, and certainly have been there, I know its weaknesses, and it certainly is something that could get so much better. Now, what is that expense to get better? We don't know, but seeing it demolished or downsized was really something that is not acceptable for a city our size. And South Alabama certainly has had 10 years of their footballs, and they did it with us at the community stadium, and I hope that their experience, although I'm sure it was bumpy because of the stadium's facility, but I want everyone to be extremely proud and excited about both of these initiatives, and I don't get that sense today. So, looking for the economic impact as one of the reasons why it was a good initiative for this city, and that will take a year to happen. I hope that we are presented with that in the future. And I thought that we need a good plan for LAD, and understanding of what it represents in the community at the table, the LAD board, its management at the table. And as the university grows, there are things that this city can do so much better in an area that I do represent, because getting people to and from businesses, to the university, to other schools, to shopping, and all the things that take place near the University of South Alabama, because you've been a magnet for that growth, we need to do a much better job. That will cost the city, and we need to get a handle on that. That's what long-range planning is all about. And so I say that the initiatives that the university has is a positive, and what is positive for the University of South Alabama is positive for our city of Mobile, but the partnership that was asked for, I believe... believe either needs to be retooled and/or other resources gathered by the university that this city would not be part of. But a community stadium is also needed. And to what extremely take that is a whole nother issue and should be separated. And so I just cannot affirm this LOI. And so I just want to be perfectly transparent about that. And I know that I can never make everybody happy with my vote, because that's near to impossible. I will land on an equation that do not please or cannot please everybody. But I really am looking at the big picture. And to being a good steward with our tax dollars, and that's a job that I take extremely seriously. So thank you.
Ms. Rich, thank you. Any further comments?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis, and then Mr. Small.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. As my colleague, Mr. Williams pointed out last week, this issue has proved to be a very divisive one in our community. There's been a lot of passion on the various sides. I, I think it's fair to say that, that there's a lot of disparate opinion about the wisdom of this move. I think to a certain extent, the passion has made a discussion of the merits of the proposal extremely difficult. This started out as a measure to reduce the city's long-term expense in operating and maintaining LAD while at the same time, supporting one of the city's largest economic drivers, the University of South Alabama. I've been very upfront about my support for this proposal. For a net present value of about $5 million, a little less probably, the city gets a new $70 million stadium that its current bowl games and it, the city, can use rent-free, and that someone else, the University of South Alabama, will operate and maintain. LAD People's Stadium could be repurposed so as to be a fitting venue for the high school football teams, which are likely to be its most consistent users after the USA Stadium is built. The repurposing of LAD would also make it a more flexible venue, perhaps allowing it to be in use more frequently than in the past. I think it's important to point out that a person can be pro-LAD and pro-this deal at the same time, as I am, because he or she feels that with USA intent on building their stadium, this proposal is in the best long-term interest of LAD. What is before us is a specific commitment to maintain LAD as a vital part of the community in which it sits and as the city as a whole. The alternative is no commitment and no plan. Finally, I'd like to say that I have the highest amount of admiration and respect for the LAD People's Stadium Board. They have done an excellent job over the past several years operating the state, the stadium with reduced funding from the city. If this measure fails, I believe the board will, in the future, face some significant challenges, and I wish them the best of luck. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Small?
And Mr. Chairman, I also want to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Vice President Manzi. When I first received knowledge about the city investing into the University of South Alabama, I received a phone call. I was very supportive of it. And the reason why I was very supportive of it, as I told the individual on the phone that evening, is that I had knowledge that the Senior Bowl was leaving Mobile because of the condition of LAD Stadium. I know about the flooding, the infrastructure problems, not just only in District Three, but throughout the rest of the city. And to me, it was more reasonable and cheaper to invest $10 million over 20 years and support the University of South Alabama, $500,000 a year, and just besides taking a 70 to 100 million dollars and invest into LAD Stadium. And we can take that money and invest into our communities. So I was very supportive until we had a committee meeting. When we had a committee meeting, I asked a representative from the Senior Bowl, you know, is the Senior Bowl is threatening to leave Mobile because of the condition of LAD Stadium. And the representative said, no. I turned around and asked the question again, you know, if the Senior Bowl is threatening to leave because of the condition of LAD Stadium. The individual stated, no, that, but they will go to South Alabama once they build their new stadium. Well, once he said that they would not leave because of the condition of LAD, I didn't have a backbone to really support the University of South Alabama by giving them 10 millions of dollars of taxpayers' money for the next, over the next 20 years. So therefore, I still was trying to be supportive of University of South Alabama, because the mayor, Councilman Richardson, myself, and the University of South Alabama went over to London back in July. And we had many companies, and we talked to many companies, and they continued to ask about the workforce in Mobile. And they're stating that we're coming to Mobile, we want to look, but make sure that you have the workforce in Mobile. And we have plenty of jobs. We have jobs right now that we can't get city work done because we don't have the employees to fill them. And investing to a college, to me, is basically, we're trying to bring students into the Mobile area and hopefully that we can gain their attention to stay here with our on-campus football stadium and stay here and raise their family, for we can fill the jobs that's not only currently, right now, in Mobile, but the jobs that are coming in the future. You know, well, CJ, why would you do that? Well, you also have to realize that the City of Mobile had gave many incentives to many businesses that's already existence. Two of them that I really voted against. The first one that came to the council was Westwood Shopping Center on Shumager Road. We was on a couple of days, it was on a couple of days from opening, one particular anchor store at Westwood, but the city decided to give them incentives. I voted no against that because I'm like, why would you give this shopping center incentives, and it's on a couple of days opening before the main anchor store opened up? Why would you do that? The next time the city had gave incentives out was to Bel Air Mall. You know, the city, which I voted against also, Bel Air Mall was already in the midst of remodeling the mall. And the shops of Bel Air was in the midst of remodeling already. So why would the city invest into that? Because it's already in the process. Also, one of the news station did a story about how much incentives have the city had gave, you know, a couple of companies throughout the City of Mobile that that did not come to council, period. There was no outcry of that. It was no outcry of Bel Air Mall. It was no outcry of Westwood Shopping Center. But yet, when it came to South Alabama, that was an outcry from the citizens of Mobile. So with that being said, that when the citizens start crying out, is my job is to also listen to the citizens. Even though I believe in economic development, trying to bring students to the University of South Alabama, hoping that they will stay here, raise their kids, and fill up our jobs, I still had the process of listening to the citizens. And even though that the city had supported several initiatives in the past, my job is still is to listen to the citizens of Mobile. Please know the decision to build an on-campus stadium rests with the USA Board of Directors and its staff. And should they build a stadium, yes, they should. But the majority of the citizens that I represent, you know, they rather see the $10 million be invested into other projects throughout the City of Mobile, including LAD Stadium. From many streets and infrastructure projects to the need for quality of life projects for the citizens of Mobile. Many citizens that I represent and citizens that I don't represent, you know, they already feel that Bay Fest was taken away from them. They already feel that the Christmas parade that the city sponsored years, a couple of years ago and years in the past, was taken away from them. They feel like the New Year's parade was taken away from them. They feel like a lot of quality of life was taken away from them. And they also feel like that we taking away the Senior Bowl and Dollar General Bowl from the east side of 65, shipping it over to the west side of 65. I would not be a part of that myth. I asked the administration several times to be transparent with the citizens, to have meetings with the citizens, talk to the citizens, let them know your plan. I even asked, you know, as you probably heard in the news conference last week, a letter of intent. It wasn't for CJ. It was for the citizens of Mobile that wanted to know several questions, several questions asked why would the administration pop up the report of how bad LAD Stadium is when we're on the verge of trying to give them millions of dollars, and the report had been done years ago. Question asked in, why are we moving the stadium from the east side of 65 to the west side of 65, and we moving the airport downtown? Isn't that backwards? I cannot give the citizens those answers, you know. And that's the reason why I asked for, you know, the meetings with the citizens, to be transparent with the citizens. You know, citizens are asking me, you know, isn't the point of moving everything out to West Mobile? You know, I want to say no, but I am not the administrator. I only legislate. I just wanted the administration to communicate, to be transparent with the citizens, not just in District Three, but the citizens of Mobile. And that I have not received as of yet, nor have the citizens of Mobile, even the citizens of District Three. I don't think it is a wise thing, and I am not willing to contribute in getting rid of, of moving things from the average citizens that I represent, that they can enjoy on the east side of 65. It's, it's, it's critical that the City of Mobile to address their own pressing issues and projects for all citizens. I had a couple of citizens that came to me and stated, if the mayor would work as hard on blight and crime as he do for the USA Stadium, we would have the most safest, friendly business city by the year 2020. But yet, it looked like we having the most deadly city by the year 2020. So therefore, my decision today would be nay. Thank you, Vice President Manzi.
Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. I know there's been a lot of frustration within the community about the length of time that it's taken this city council to get to the point today where it looks like we really will vote. We've laid it over several times, and we've talked about that. And the reason is because it is our duty to do research, to listen to people in our districts, and to look at the overall impact of the decisions that we make. Up until just before our council meeting last week, as a perfect example, negotiations were still underway between the mayor and a couple of council members, trying to generate five votes that are needed to pass this. Negotiations have been going on for some time, and looking at the city as a whole, what the needs are, and what we can do. Sometimes horse trading is just part of politics. Sometimes it's not. You may not like it, but that's generally the way things go. So we were looking at how can we generate enough votes to both support USA, support our neighborhoods, and support LAD Stadium. However, it doesn't appear that any of those negotiations were successful, and this proposal certainly appears like it will fail today. However, I will be one of the yes votes. It's unfortunate that the proposal has led to such dissension within our city. When we received the proposal for contributing to the university's new stadium, knowing that USA would be leaving LAD Stadium, followed by the Senior Bowl, the Dollar General Bowl, well, of course, the logical question was, what happens to LAD Stadium then? But linking contributing funds to USA Stadium to the future of LAD Stadium has caused so much disagreement, when really, we would prefer each to stand on their own. And I think you have heard from all of the council members here, that we certainly support LAD Stadium. LAD Stadium is a city facility. I don't think anybody on this council wants to see it torn down and totally demolished. So the future of LAD Stadium is still out there. No matter whether they're linked or not, the question to me truly has always been, what is in the best financial interest of the city overall? You know, we've learned a lot. I'm sure there's still a lot of questions, and some people don't believe it. But we have learned that there is an estimated $33 million in purely maintenance and repair needs at LAD Stadium. That's just maintenance, has nothing to do with the technology that is or is not available, scoreboards, jumbotrons, you name it. Also, it doesn't, it will have to address handicap accessibility. And all of this, over the next 20 years, versus that 7.5 million that the mayor has proposed that we contribute over the same time period to the university to build a new state-of-the-art, high-tech stadium. And yes, they only want to start with 25,000 seats, but they have ample parking and plenty of room to grow. And they have said over the years, if it looks like they need the growth, there's space to do it, and that's exactly what the plan would be. The 2.5 million kickback to the city is truly just a starting point in my mind for LAD Stadium. To start those conversations, well, in a lot of ways, to continue the conversations for the future of LAD Stadium and the neighborhood that surrounds the stadium. We've discussed in some meetings between the council members and the mayor, hiring a planner, and also forming a commission to lead this effort. That can and should be done. Under the proposal, the city would save about $20 million over these 20 years in maintenance fees at LAD Stadium. And that money could then be used for all of these different infrastructure projects that we know are sorely needed citywide. So I think that in and of itself is at least one of the bonuses that, that we could look at. You know, Hillsdale is a community that backs up to USA. It's the immediate neighbor of the site where the new stadium will be constructed. Like Maysville, Hillsdale will be impacted by the stadium differently, because the stadium at South Alabama will be built next door to Hillsdale. USA has agreed to partner with the city and with me and the district and all of the Hillsdale neighbors to be a good neighbor, to work with us on projects to improve the neighborhood, to increase property values there, and eliminate any possibility of cut-through traffic going to the stadium for any of these football games. I will be working with the community as a whole to determine what these projects should and will be. They are not my projects, they are the community's projects. And I thank USA for agreeing to partner with me to make these things happen. Again, I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the time, and look forward to moving forward, one way or the other. And I would request, Mr. Chairman and Madam City Clerk, a roll call vote on this issue.
I only have one issue with a roll call vote.
Sure.
Not one issue. Mr. Williams, did you have?
Unfortunate was the word I heard a couple of times this morning, and it has indeed been unfortunate, that this has been such a divisive issue. And what makes it unfortunate is what is contrary to my friend Reverend Brown, that says that we weren't very friendly in those family discussions. Weren't friendly at all. And I, I went into detail last time, so I won't do that again. What is seeping up from some of the bottom of discussions and corners that I don't, that I'm not invited to, is that at one time, I was party to a recommendation that South Alabama consider a 5% discount on all ticket sales. I was told no. I want to make it very clear that that was never a condition of my vote. I didn't say I would vote if. I said that I thought it would make it an easier sale. This was in the first couple of weeks of this discussion, that people could see exactly where they would benefit. I was told very specifically that they would be happy to make a discounted ticket section. And I simply said, that's not exactly what I'm talking about. I just want to see that if you're in, willing to do something. And this is sort of like a sticking point that you have when you- And this is sort of like a sticking point that you have when you're trying to buy a new car. That thing is shined up, it's looking good. You know, I want a new car right now myself. I don't, I don't own a new car, I had an opportunity to, but we got to this sticking point. And it was during that sticking point that you really start thinking deep about whether or not you really need the new car. And that's where I got with, with this issue. When they said we'll make a discounted ticket section, would that work? I could only imagine where that ticket section might be. In this case, you, I think everyone must recognize, or I hope you will recognize, that not only is my wife a lifetime member of the, of the Alumni Association of South Alabama, but we were season ticket holders for the first six years of football. We're currently season ticket holders on our fifth year in basketball. We had four years of baseball season tickets. And I'm not talking about just little tickets. We personally support, and I encourage everyone to do the same, USA Health Systems. There's plenty of opportunities to give there, and we do on a regular basis. But it was that further examination after the initial shiny car experience. Because boy, this is going to be a great stadium, guys. I'm just telling you, every, there is no doubt that South Alabama, in my opinion, is going to build a stadium, and it is going to be fantastic. But it was that further examination that takes me to the stance that I am now. And I just made a commitment to the people of Mobile, Alabama, that I was going to rebuild their neighborhoods and their parks, their streets. And we are $300 million behind on that effort. We are never going to catch up, no matter what our tax structure is. We simply are not. And Mayor is absolutely right. The mayor said in a, in a briefing that this would be added to the great long list of properties that we must address. These are not easy decisions. I do not envy our mayor. I gave the mayor my support five years ago, and I would do so again today unquestionably. I give him my time and my resources. Because I do think he is one hell of a mayor. And I believe in South Alabama and Dr. Waltrip. I, I do not believe that we could ask for a better person leading our university. It's simply that I have a difference in opinion, and that's where I am. I respect everyone that's had a, a part in this campaign. South Alabama's fought a hell of a fight. I just simply say, we, right now, we're going a different direction. And I hope that we can get over this, continue as a family. Uh, hopefully, we'll have more prayers, uh, that'll be effective as my friend Bob Brown spoke of. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's before us today is a letter of intent. The mayor placed this on our agenda, and this is what we are considering today. And let me say that prior to this letter of intent from USA, Lad Stadium was off the radar. Nobody was even discussing Lad Stadium, let alone giving it some money. USA placed Lad Stadium on Front Street. And we have this great opportunity to help USA to build a stadium and to help Lad Stadium to remain viable. That's what's before us right now. We have that opportunity. And when the day goes by, if we don't do the right thing, Lad Stadium will go back into oblivion. Just like it was before this item was put on the agenda. If we would, first of all, this council cannot put revenue items on this agenda. The city could have $95 billion, and we still want to address Lad Stadium. Because we cannot put revenue items on this agenda. I have 44 open ditches in Trinity Garden running parallel to the street, and the city didn't give me one penny to close the first ditch until the council extended the penny. Because it takes the administration to put revenue items on this agenda. To say we could take that money and that we can't take, we can't do it. If the mayor doesn't put it over there, we won't be over there. But let's look at what's before us. What's before us is that the city would give to Lad Stadium over a period of 20 years, 10, I mean to USA, $10 million. USA out of kindness of their own heart, not by request of this city, said, I recognize that Lad Stadium is an issue. We would give back to the city 2.5 million, meaning that USA will only be getting 7.5 million from the city. So when I saw that, I went upstairs to meet with the mayor to see what would he commit toward Lad Stadium in light of the 2.5 million dollars. The mayor said, I would commit to 2 million dollars from the city. That's 4.5 million. He said, I would commit to asking the county for 2 million. 6.5 million. And he says, since they have four high schools that will be playing at Lad Stadium, I would go to the school board for 2 million. That's 8.5 million versus 7.5 million for USA. Otherwise, Lad upfront, we could expect to receive 8.5 million dollars toward Lad. If we vote this down, what Lad's going to get? Zero. That's what Lad would be getting. So some said, well, they're going to build a stadium anyway. None of that would come to Lad. Yeah, they might build a stadium anyway, but how much will we get out of that for Lad? Zero. I fancy, and I do believe, and I'll say this, we all have to look at this issue through our own lens. We don't see it the same. We don't see this the same. It's not that the council is divided, it's, it, this is an issue that we are having to all vote on. We have to listen to those people who put us in office. I'm not opposed to any of these council members for whatever position they take. They're doing what they think they have to do. I'm giving you my viewpoint on this. This is through the lens of Fred Richardson. I believe that when this new stadium is built, that it won't be like Lad Stadium. Because Lad Stadium is waiting, it's locked up right now. Go down there, look at the door. It's locked up because they're waiting on a bowl game to come. Then they lock it back up again, and they wait on another game. Then they re-lock the door for another game. USA will have a multiplicity of events coming to this city that is, that is exciting, that's going to be exciting, and it's going to be generating revenue for this city, and it's going to be an opportunity for our citizens to go out and, and have fun. That's what's going to happen at the university. And they can't put these events on without the city making money. The economic impact from all of this will more than give the city what it's going to give to Lad Stadium. So I don't have no wrath, so I'm not tussling with no decision. I'm voting today for the letter of intent, hoping that we'll get that 2 and 2.5 million dollars and the other money the mayor said he could get added to Lad Stadium, and we're going to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Councilmember Mansell?
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilmember Richardson and I also disagree with Councilmember Richardson. Uh, Councilmember Richardson stated that the mayor had told him that he can get money from the school board, uh, the county, and also the city. And I was, was introduced and presented the same thing. That's why I had said, well, if we can give a letter of intent with the University of South Alabama, we can do a letter of intent with the citizens of Mobile. Let me show them, citizens of Mobile, we go forth with this, uh, resolution that we can get 8.5 million dollars into Lad Stadium. And the only thing I wanted is something in black and white so I could sort of show the citizens of Mobile. And I could not get that in black and white. My question is, if the county is having problems now debating if they want to give South Alabama 10 million or 5 million, who said they're going to have problems in giving Lad Stadium some money? My problem, my issue, my question to myself is that who said that the school board, the five members on there, is going to agree to give Lad some money? And the money that I understand is coming from the community block, development grant money that the city is talking about putting in, that money's supposed to be put into the city anyway. And let's go ahead, and so if that money's supposed to be put in low moderate neighborhoods, let's go ahead and commit that money today to Lad Stadium. And we can have that 2 million dollars or, or wherever the community block development grant money is going to Lad Stadium. We can have that today. You know, they're also talking about, you know, it's going to bring in revenue. I can't see it bringing in revenue. Only thing I can see is money just being recycled. Thank you, Vice President.
Yeah, any further comments? I've heard another colleague say that this was a struggle. And, uh, to be quite frank and honest with you, it's been a struggle for me as well. I was there when the conversation for football started at the University of South Alabama. At that time, I represented, I believe, the College of Arts and Sciences. And I was on the SGA not to express my sole opinion, but to represent the sentiments and expressions of the students that were in that particular college. I enjoyed my college experience and would have loved to have had football, to have been a part of it. But let's fast forward 11 or 12 years, and I'm here now. And I don't represent the students of the College of Arts and Sciences. I represented 28,732 residents that reside in the greatest district of this city. And many of them, the vast majority of them, have expressed a very passionate opinion relative to this agenda item. In spite of that, over the last two to three weeks, uh, I, and I don't mind describing it this way, I put in an inordinate amount of time working with the administration to come up with ideas that would make this agenda item more palatable in my communities. Specifically in Maysville, because we've got to understand that whether we contribute the 10 million dollars or not, at some point, it's my belief, South will build a beautiful, multi-purpose stadium out in West Mobile, and two communities will be impacted intimately. Hillsdale, because the stadium will be there and all of the new traffic. And Maysville, because everyone in here believes that Maysville, that Lad Stadium will be on life support once, uh, these bowl games and any other games leave, and that the stadium board and its management, and that some citizens here in the city of Mobile can't get together and have the wherewithal to plan a chapter two for Lad Stadium. Because I believe we can do it. I'm, I don't subscribe to the notion that we are one stadium town. If Montgomery can have two, if Birmingham can have two, if cities much smaller than us can, can find events and venues to keep two stadiums busy, then we can do it. And if we don't have the proper people on the stadium board that have the wherewithal and the bandwidth to keep Lad Stadium going, then we need to get rid of them. But if we have them, and we, we need to encourage them, we need to nourish them, we need to give them the funding it takes to make certain that all of the, uh, castings of doom and gloom for Lad Stadium that we heard are become untrue. There are other games, there are other venues, other things the city could sponsor that could generate revenue. We won't know until we try. And I don't think we need to just say, we need to cast all our eggs in one basket, uh, and, and, and say that this is where we are. We're bigger than that, in my estimation. Even with all of that, I am a creature of my community. I didn't get in this seat by osmosis. I got here by votes. The people are my board of directors. And I've heard from my board. I tried. I tried to come up with a plan that would make it workable in those communities, revitalize those communities, working with Councilwoman Gina Gregory. She'll tell you, we spending an inordinate amount of time. And it's not that we asked to do it. We were brought to the table. So this was not a backroom kickback kind of a proposition. And I don't appreciate that categorization, because that's not how I operate. I've been in government 10 years. I don't operate that way. Operate in full faith with those who want to operate in, with, in full faith with me. I don't know how you operate in, in government and don't have give and take. No one person is going to get his way, get her way. I get some of what I want sometime. Gregory will get some of what she wants sometime. Fred Richardson will get some of what, he took, took him 20 years to get his ditches.
Right.
Government is built to have give and take, bartering. We don't have a king in the city of Mobile. We don't have queens in the city of Mobile. And after all of that effort, all of that work to try to come up with some kind of compromise that could work, that the community was excited about, it's their money anyway. All of that was shattered. Shattered, and, uh, I can't tell you that, that did not begin this struggle that I'm with right now. So in light of that, uh, I'm, I'm wishing South Alabama well. Uh, I'm hopeful that they'll be able to do what they need to do when they need to do it. But the people who I report back to have let me know loud and clear the direction that they want to go in. And absent me having something else to show them and tell them about revitalization, about how things will be better, absent me having any of that, absent me having an economic analysis, absent me having any numbers relative to how tax revenue would be increased, absent me having any of that, uh, I'm going to have to vote the way I vote today. Any other comments? Did you cut it on? I thought you had some more comments now. It's, it's time for a vote. A roll call vote has been requested. I'm going to call upon our capable city clerk.
Vice President Manzi?
No.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Daves?
Yes.
Councilmember Rich?
No.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes.
We've, we've had a roll call vote. The item fails, uh, for in opposition, three in support.
Mr. Vice President, may I make a comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I've, over the last more than a month, it's been probably closer to two months, I've, um, sat in here, plus had multiple conversations with multiple people about the opportunity going forward. You know, the mayor sits here and people make remarks about things that, uh, the mayor does and the administration doesn't do. And, um, I don't say much about, uh, contesting some of those remarks that are made because it's, I just don't feel it's appropriate to do so. But when the conversation goes about spending money east of I-65 and west of I-65, I can say this, that those conversations, it, it starts somewhere else. Never in the history of the city of Mobile has money been more equitably distributed, distributed in fixing things than it has been the last five years. And the city council is largely responsible for that. But it also takes the administration to execute it, as you heard. I mean, every city council district, for the first time ever, 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 is getting the same amount of money spent in those districts. So to accuse us of, of... So to accuse us of, of favoring one side of the city versus another, um, I think is just a fallacy. Uh, it's unfortunate that maybe some feel that way. Uh, you know, the, if you notice today, that we had females for and females against. We had males for, males against. African-Americans for, African-Americans against. Well, so this is not one of those divisive things that really divides a community. It certainly is not dividing it racially. And so, uh, where do we go from here? You know, I think there was a lot of conjecture about what will happen, and everybody's looking at it from what they really think is going to happen. Uh, they believe that, you know, that maybe we can have two stadiums. But based on the information that is at my disposal, and based on knowing that going forward, that it takes five city councillors to do anything, and there are going to be multiple, multiple difficult decisions coming forward. And one of the things that I said that I would be willing to do and would do is I would take on the tough challenges and, and address them. And the reason is that the city of Mobile, uh, the population has been declining since, um, nineteen sixty, probably nineteen sixty-five or so. And so to sit here and think that, you know, we can continue to do the same things and afford things the way that we've been doing it and just keep on, you know, it's just really not that simple. But I will say this, that all the items that we have opportunities to spend money on, which there are three hundred and sixty-seven buildings, there are three hundred and sixty, I mean, and numerous parks, that very difficult divisive decisions will have to be made. But that's what the mayor will, uh, is hired to do or elected to do, and I assure you that we all will take this decision by this council, and I will do my very best to make sure that we look at the options that are available to us and come up with the best possible solution for the, for the city of Mobile. So I just wanted to share that, uh, opinion. I will, uh, you know, today, uh, we'll bring closure to this, but a lot of what was said today completely opposite each other, uh, about what will happen in the future, you know, some of it's going to be right. And so we'll just have to see how it goes. But thank you for your support, and I thank you for your voices.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Mayor, let me say, on behalf of the council, we're willing to work with you on those tough challenges, but we're going to have to work together, and this process is going to include some give and take. One side can't say that I'm not willing to negotiate, I'm not willing to, uh, have discussions and, and expect the other side, uh, to be receptive. This, this is a government. I'm sure, and, and I know all of us are aware of that, and, and part of that is discussion. Part of that is give and take. No, the administration won't get all of what it wants. This legislative branch won't get all of what we want. We've got to work together. Like you've heard of divergence of opinion about L.A., we've got to come together as a, as leadership to decide how we move forward, and we're willing to do that, uh, recognizing that you are the mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mayor City Clerk?
Zero one five six one, authorized agreement with the Revenue Commissioner, Mobile County, Alabama, to collect the city of Mobile annual stormwater fee.
So moved. Second.
Probably motion is second and a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Zero nine five seven nine, five, five eight zero, five eight one, reallocating monies from police administration to capital fund to the initial phase of the feasibility study.
Let's just wait. Let's wait till it goes lead.
All right.
Okay. Zero nine five seven nine, reallocate monies from police administration to capital account to fund the initial phase of the feasibility study for the new public safety headquarters. Zero nine five eight zero, reallocate monies from police administration to capital account to fund fencing on the city property at the police impound lot. Zero nine five eight one, reallocate monies to the museum of arts improvements, to capital project museum of arts improvements. Twenty-one five eight two, authorized contract with Thompson Consulting Services for post-disaster debris removal, monitoring, and consulting services. Cost to be determined in the event of a disaster based on rates outlined in the contract. Twenty-one five eight three, authorized contract with Apex Construction for fire station number twenty-eight drainage improvements. Twenty-one five eight four, authorized contract with Cytranet for Wi-Fi service for Mobile Cruise Terminal. Twenty-one five eight five, authorized performance contract with the Gulf Coast Explorium Science Center to assist with funding for the upcoming CON exhibit. Twenty-one five eight nine, authorized contract with Huff Core for Arthur R. Outlaw Convention Center aqua boil petition wall improvements.
So moved.
Probably motion is second and a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passed.
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, zero three five nine zero through sixty-six zero two.
Watching for the suspension of rules for media consideration of Revolution zero three five ninety through sixty-six oh two.
With the exception of sixty-six oh two.
Okay.
Are you going to take sixty-six oh two?
And can we have a roll call on who, uh, who voted to?
Are we now taking sixty-six oh two?
He's refusing unanimous consent is, that's non-
It does have unanimous consent or not?
That, that would be undebateable if he chooses.
Question is, do we or do we not? Do we have unanimous consent?
No.
We don't.
Okay.
With the exception of six oh, six, I'm not going to vote it.
Zero three five nine zero, reappoint Barbara Hattier to the Advisory Commission on the Disabled. Zero three five nine one, reappoint Adam Metcalf to the Board of Adjustment. Zero three six zero eight, appoint Joyce Boykin to the Mobile Library Board. Zero three six zero nine, appoint Eunice Mingo-Blakely to the Code Advisory Committee. Zero three six ten, appoint Larisse Tolliver to the Mobile Historic Development Commission. Thirty-one five nine two, authorize the mayor to apply, accept, and receive funding for the B.J. Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program.
So moved. Second.
Probably motion is second and a discussion.
I would like to just discuss, um, the appointment of Barbara Hattier. Um, Barbara is, um, being reappointed, I want to tell you, for at least the second or third time on this commission. It's a very important commission, uh, works with issues dealing with the disabled, and she is a professional in that particular realm. She is getting ready to retire from the, um, Independent Living Center, and I feared that perhaps she was going to tuck away, but in her virtue, she has said that she is looking forward to still staying active, and I am forever grateful, and would just like to note that.
Any other discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passed.
Forty-five nine three, declare the structure at four hundred St. Charles Avenue a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Move the table.
Second.
Probably motion is second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Just for the record, it was pointed out that the building has already been demolished, so it does not need, uh, council attention.
Any further discussion?
Alexander Graham Bell.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Forty-five nine four, nine five nine six nine seven nine eight, are declaring structures at four seventy-six Ridge Road, five fifty-eight Rollins Avenue, fifteen sixty-seven Clover Street, seventeen twelve Union Street, twenty-eight fifty-five Pages Lane, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Fifty-eight five nine nine and six, fifty-eight six hundred are assessing cost for removal of weeds groups fifteen seventy-eight and weed lean group G twenty-two. Sixty-six zero one, determine expenditure for discretionary funds for contribution to the Sierra Bonita Neighborhood Association serves a public purpose and approved payment.
So moved. Second.
Probably motion is second and a discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passed.
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, twenty-one six zero three.
By Council rules, this resolution will live for one week.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, zero nine six zero four through twenty-one six zero seven.
By Council rules, these resolutions will live for one week.
Announcements.
I'm going to start with, uh, Mr. Richardson.
Uh, I would like to announce that, um, I will be holding my Tovenville Community Meeting on Thursday, September the twentieth, starting at six o'clock at the Tovenville Library, asking all, all our citizens in Tovenville to come out, uh, to this important meeting. We're, we're going to be talking about jobs. We have, uh, various company representatives there, CIP projects, we're going over those. We'll have a public safety update from the Chief of Police and the Captain. Uh, the system will be able to, uh, provide me any input regarding issues in the community, and we'll have announced, special announcements. So we're asking all our citizens to come out and join us.
Mr. Small?
Uh, thank you, Vice President Manzi. On last Saturday, uh, we had a very large crowd at the dedication, um, of Rayfield Davis Way. Um, we had a street dedication because, uh, he was brutally murdered, um, and, uh, was dumped in the ditch, uh, in District Three at the Tennessee and Broad Street, uh, area. Uh, basically, it was a very large crowd with the family, friends, along with Councilmember Rich and Richardson. Also, um, we have representatives from the History Museum and the Northeastern University School of Law Civil Rights and Restored Justice, um, Project. Uh, also, we have honored, uh, five other, uh, victims, um, that was brutally killed in Mobile during, um, racial motivated killings in the nineteen forties. And there will be a display at the History Museum, um, that is going on now until the end of the month, inviting all citizens and citizens outside of Mobile, residents outside of Mobile, to go to the History, uh, Museum and, uh, view these, um, racial motive killings that had happened in our community. Um, it's a sad story, but, you know, bringing light to a sad situation. But again, we need to learn from our history, so therefore we're inviting all the citizens, uh, to go out to the History Museum and view the renderings from the nineteen forties of these, uh, young men's that did not get justice, uh, because of racial profiling, uh, killings that happened in the nineteen forties. On last evening, uh, we had our, uh, District Three meeting at the Gilroy Elementary School. I'd like to thank the administration for sending our different departments to address the citizens' concerns. Uh, we had several people there, uh, from different jobs, um, telling the citizens that, you know, we are now hiring in the, uh, city and the, uh, county of Mobile. I also like to thank Ms. Young for also helping spreading the word throughout the community, and most important, all the residents, um, for coming out on last evening. Also like to send special thanks to Mrs. Bell, um, on last evening for opening up her school doors. Also, I'd like to thank you, um, Ms. Deidra Farrelly for on last evening, because we had a Fred Richardson Community Meeting last night, from six o'clock to about nine-thirty, nine forty-five last night. It was a great meeting, and I do appreciate you, Ms. Deidra, for being there. And also thank you, Marion, for, um, for Saturday, too. Uh, you was a great help on Saturday with the dedication and getting everything together. And I also like to thank the administration for their help on Saturday also. And again, they're remembering that District Three is a place where things are happening. Thank you, Vice President Manzi.
You give more than welcome, uh, Mr. Small, and I regret that I was not able to attend that Rayford Davis Act, uh, Memorial Sinus Event. I wanted to be there, I was out of town, could not be there, but I appreciate, uh, your willingness to work with the family to do something.
Thank you for your support.
One hundred percent. Mr. Davis? Mrs. Rich?
No announcements.
Mr. Williams?
I just want to tell all the, uh, folks that are sending me all these tweets, they keep them coming, they're, they're very creative. Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm getting some similar tweets. Some good, some bad, but I'm happy, uh, that we've come to resolution. Uh, and this isn't, I'm not anti-South Alabama, I want to say that. I'm not anti-South Alabama. There'll be those who feel that way, if that's okay. Uh, but I am pro-Mobile, and I want, what's good for South is good for Mobile, and, uh, I'm happy that we've come to resolution. And, uh, just appreciative of all of each of our efforts, uh, over the last two months. It's been, uh, an interesting experience, and, uh, and so we, we, we've had an opportunity. We asked to vote, we voted, and, and so we can hopefully, uh, journey on. Any other announcements from the, uh, council? I want to thank Marion Steinbells as well. Uh, she's kind of in the background, uh, but she's always there, uh, to be a support for us, and, uh, she does an excellent job. Just thank this entire staff, from our city clerk to our attorney, to our assistant city clerk, Ms. Henley, Ms. Lana, Ms. Dorth, Ms. uh, Deidra. I'm about to give you a new first name. Ms. Deidra, prob, thank, pardon me. Thank all of you. Because you've got seven interesting characters up here, but we all love the city of Mobile, Alabama. I wouldn't want to be anywhere else, and I have the privilege of representing the absolute best district in the city.
Well.
Hands down. Is there a motion? Mr. Serseka? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mean the jump.
Just thinking of you, a heads up.
No problem. You all are great.